Yep, so go through.
All right, we call the City of Kiwanee Common Council meeting, reorganization meeting for April fifteenth to order. Let the record show all members are present. The meeting is in compliance with open meeting laws, so we'll move on to item four, new business. For a acceptance of certification of the Board of Canvassers for the spring twenty twenty five general election. So we'll pass.
All right, so right here I have the certification of the Board of Canvassers. It is signed by all of the Board of Canvassers. And then right behind it are the tapes that print out from the machine where they've calculated and gone against the ballots. So if you guys want to pass that around, take a look at it. If you have any questions, please let me know. Mayor, after they've reviewed it, if you could ask for a motion to accept the Board of Canvas for the twenty twenty five April election results with a roll call vote.
You bet.
Thank you.
Okay, everyone's had a chance to review the Board of Canvassers documentation. If I could have a motion to accept?
No, no.
I want a second. Blaha, second Brewster. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Jim Cork. Blaha. Yes. Brewster?
All right.
House?
Yes.
Oftado?
Yes.
Mills?
Uh, point of order.
Oh, that's one in, yeah.
That's okay. Yep, because you're gonna be swearing in for it.
Yes. Conley?
Yes.
Motion carried. Four B swearing in of alderpersons. Aldermanic District one, John Blaha. Aldermanic District two, Edward Nedhouse. Aldermanic District three, Joseph Mills. Aldermanic District four, Jeffrey Conley.
All right, so you have your oath of offices in front of you. For those of you who are being sworn in, if you could please rise and raise your right hand and repeat after me. Um, after I say the name I, or I say the word I, if you could repeat your name. So I.
I, Nedhouse.
Having been elected or appointed.
Having been elected or appointed.
To the office of alderperson.
To the office of alderperson.
But have not yet entered.
Yet entered.
Upon the duties thereof.
Upon the duties thereof.
Swear or affirm.
Swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will swear.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
Constitution of the United.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Faithfully discharge the duties.
Of said office.
Then others.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
All right, if you all could sign your oath of office, please.
Congratulations. I really appreciate your willingness to serve, all of you, and welcome. Welcome to the council, some of you welcome back, and some of you welcome for the first time.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. All right, item four C, election of council president. At this time, we will open it up for a nomination for council president. You nominate Jim Brewster. We have a nomination. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Uh, we have a nomination for council president by John Blaha. Do you need a second on that, or just a roll? Uh. What? Second? Do I have a second on that?
One second.
We have a second. With no other nominations, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item four D, appointment of city attorney, Ray Lewis and Lacy. Do I have a?
I'll move.
I have a motion. And a second. Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. For E, appointment of official newspaper, Green Bay Press Gazette. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. For F, appointment of municipal depositories, Bank of Luxembourg, Nicolay National Bank, local government investment pool, and bank first, do I have a motion for that?
I'll move.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. For G, motion to approve mayor's appointments of council members to committees, boards, commissions, one-year terms, expiring four twenty-one of twenty-six. We have Public Works Committee. Do I need to read all of these, or is everybody okay with what's in front of you?
I'm fine.
Okay, so that goes through the Finance Committee, Public Property Committee, Personnel Committee, Plan Commission, Public Library Board, Board of Review, Clerk, Treasurer, Representative, Community Center Committee, Lighthouse Preservation Committee, Tug Lutting to make the tongue committee, and the Marina Committee. Do you have a motion to approve as printed?
Okay. I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. What's that?
Yeah.
Nay? One nay. For H, motion to approval mayor's appointments of citizen members to committees, boards, commissions. This is for the Plan Commission, Police and Fire Commission, Community Center Committee, Board of Zoning Appeals, Historic Preservation Commission, Marina Committee. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move. I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One nay? Motion carried. Item five, approve posting for vacant council position in Aldermanic District four with deadline for application set for May eighth, twenty twenty-five, and interview consideration of candidates at May twelfth, twenty twenty-five council meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Second by Jim. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Six, other questions, comments, announcements. Are there any announcements? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the reorganization meeting.
No.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, we'll call our order. The City of Kiwanee Common Council, April fifteenth. Following the special meeting for reorganization, let the record show all members are present. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invincible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Item three, approval of March tenth, twenty twenty-five common council minutes. I would entertain a motion to approve unless there are any corrections.
I'll make a motion.
We have a second.
One second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item four, public comment communications, three-minute time limit per person. If there's anyone that wishes to speak on their public comment, please step forward, state your name and your address. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on their public comment this evening? Is there anyone that wishes to speak on their public comment? Hearing none, public comment is closed. Item five, boards, commissions, committee reports, and staff reports. Do I have a motion to accept and place on file?
Hold on.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just have one question. Carol, on the endowment fund, where does that money go?
The endowment fund for the library?
Yes.
Um, it's held with the board, and it's currently invested in CDs, and we can't, we can only spend interest on it.
Right.
At the ten-year mark, and at the twelve-year mark.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, it's, I see that. Because I'm wondering what the intent of to use that money is for. Do they have this, have they spoken about it? It's almost three hundred thousand dollars, so I'm just wondering what they intend on doing with the money.
Well, we're gonna see where the survey results come back and see how much interest there is, you know, for newer or expanding.
Have you talked about a specific project or anything for it? No?
No, because then, you know, they, the board takes, like, we replenish our computers and things like that.
Okay.
In the budget.
Okay, thanks.
Any further discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second to accept and place on file. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item six, mayor's report. First, I'd like to thank the two members, Nelson and Anderson, who are no longer on the board. I'd like to thank them for their time and all that they did while serving on the City Council for Kiwanee. And again, I'm welcoming the new members and the returning members. Uh, six A, public fire protection, Public Service Commission, the state statute and cities' charges. So there's been inquiries as to the fire protection fees, and there had been an informational notice given out at the time that they were implemented, and it's been discussed as to the state statute, Public Service Commission, and the fact that they vote on any fees that are done, and then the city is bound to act on those decisions at the PSC. So I asked attorney if he could speak to that as to the legality and the purpose of the fire protection and et cetera.
Sure, and so I reviewed my notes there from when this issue arose a couple of years ago, and and I'm not necessarily sure what the inquiries are right now, but I'll give the council a little bit of a rundown, and then that probably will take us where we need to go. So prior to two thousand twenty-three, for, well, let me go back step. A city or municipality can charge its residents a fire protection fee, which is not necessarily a hydrant rental fee, it's an additional water charge, water-related charge for fire protection, because obviously the water that would be needed to fight fires and so on and so forth is expensive. Yada, yada, yada. Before two thousand and three, the way that the city was, received those funds was through property taxes, and it was on everybody's property tax bill, and it went into the general fund, and the city then paid the water utility that amount, which back then was like two hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Well, there were benefits and drawbacks of that system, and one of the bigger drawbacks is that because it was on the property taxes that ye who didn't pay property taxes didn't pay the fire protection charge, right? So a church or another nonprofit or non-taxable entity on their real estate wasn't paying for the fire protection charge despite needing, potentially needing that service. So in late, I couldn't tell exactly Heath the date, but sometime in either late twenty-two or twenty-three, or early twenty-three, there was a meeting to discuss whether the city was gonna continue charging the fire protection charge in that manner, or if it was going to be changed to charging directly through the water utility customers or properties within the water utility area. It wasn't exactly clear on what was decided. It was decided that it would change to going through the water utility. The question was, do we just charge water customers within the territory, or do we also charge owners of property who aren't necessarily customers of the water utility? So if you have a vacant land or so on and so forth, you would have to pay it too. What ended up happening was the application was made to the Public Service Commission that both utility customers and all other properties.
Essentially every tax parcel.
Every tax parcel will get the same charge, and the charge is based on however many, you know, the size of your meter and so on and so forth. That went through, it was approved by the PSC, which for all intents and purposes becomes the law, right? The PSC approved the tariff, it issued the tariff in mid-two thousand twenty-three, and that by law is how much the water utility has to charge customers and non-customers within the territory. That raised some issues, for lack of a better way to define it, in that people who weren't water customers were complaining, or have complained about the bills that they got.
If I could just interject one second, Tony. So it raised issues with the council as well, because the council itself was clear that what they wanted was metered customers only. They did not want to charge every tax parcel, even though they could have, according to state statute and the PSC regulations. So that's, I'll let you take over from there.
Can I just add one quick thing, Tony?
Mm-hmm.
When the application, when I spoke to the Public Service Commission, they weren't really too concerned about the resolution that was passed. What they were concerned more about was the application, and the reason that happened is because this is how that was filled out. It says, and this was Public Fire Protection Charges Schedule F one. Will direct charges also be applied to non-customers who own property in the municipality? That box was filled in and it said yes, including vacant lots. And that's how they got charged.
That's how they got charged. So that was approved by the PSC, that became the law. So everybody who got that bill then afterwards had to pay the charge. Now, I don't know, and Heath and Mayor, did we then subsequently file a new application to have that removed?
Yes.
And that has now been.
An amendment.
An amendment, and that has been removed.
Yeah.
Right, so we no longer charge non-customers to, for the fire protection charge. The issue remains is what about those bills that went out in the interim? And I'll tell you, my initial impression was, well, why don't we just waive the bills, right? Because it was a mistake. PSC said, no, by law, you can't do that. And I said, well, that seems inequitable, but it's the law. And so those bills that went out in the interim still do have to be paid, and if they're not paid, then it goes through the assessment process. And from a city legal perspective, there's absolutely nothing we can do about it.
And the city couldn't refund it either.
Right, exactly, because it says that's what you have to pay in. You know, it was a bimonthly charge for most, I believe, of twenty-one dollars and five cents, something like that. Um, so the bills aren't, and this is a matter of perspective, of course, but the bills aren't huge. It's more, I think, the can, the conversation continues more on the principle of it. Um, but from a city legal perspective, your hands are tied. We can't waive the bills, we can't refund them, we have to insist that they be paid.
That's correct. It leaves me the question, though, that once the PSC gave their opinion, that becomes law. But are they empowered to overrule state statute?
Well, they're not, the PSC, that's a bit of a, bit of a leading question, which state statute are they overruling?
There's a state statute that says specifically, and I'm one of the cases.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because my, my house, it's, it's on two pieces. They, it had a piece, and then they bought a little piece to make it big enough. So I got charged twice.
Mm-hmm.
But the state statute says you cannot do that, you can only charge once, one.
I believe it's every tax parcel. I have five or six tax parcels that my business sits on, and I had to pay on every piece that I own.
And I believe that statute, we're same with you?
Yeah, I mean, I.
The statute says you can only charge one.
I contacted, I contacted the PSC on this issue. I asked them directly. Replacing your. Is the City of Kiwanee supposed to bill every parcel regardless of ownership? There's a section of the Swiss Stats one ninety-six oh three-three B where it appears we are not supposed to bill a parcel if it's under common ocean with adjacent parcel, is that the correct reading? Response from the PSC was, in Kiwanee's conventional rate case, the utility requested option one below. They gave us options. Option two allows for the utility to use the adjacent lot language. And attached is the reference that he gave us from December thirty-one, twenty fifteen, which states, "Commission staff sending you this letter to ensure that your water utility municipality are familiar with recent changes to statute that governs the billing of the public fire protection charge to non-general service customers, including vacant lots. Passage of twenty fifteen Swiss Act fifty-five, section three fifty-two K resulted in the amendment of Swiss Stat Section nine sixty-six oh three three B to include the additional language underlined below, which is, if the person owns two or more parcels that are adjacent to each other or divided only by roadway or Brook Creek, River, or stream, the municipality may bill the person for only one parcel. Commission staff provides the following guidance. One, please note that this statute change only applies to vacant lots and other non-general service customers that the utility currently bills for the public fire protection charge. Two, commission staff understands the statement the municipality may bill to mean that the municipality has the option to either continue to bill the public fire protection charge to each parcel regardless of owner, or to bill the owners of adjacent lots as if only one parcel. Three, commission staff believes that adjacent parcels are owned by the same person, only when the titles of the two parcels are exactly the same with minor discrepancies. Section four shows what it means to be adjacent. Section five, commission staff has determined that if a municipality chooses to implement this new language by billing the owners of adjacent lots for only one parcel, then the utility must file a request with the PSC to update Schedule F one or FD one on the utility's water rate tariff. Please note that if the municipality chooses not to implement the new language and wishes to continue to bill the public fire protection charge to each parcel regardless of owner, regardless of whether they are adjacent, then no action is required, as the utility does not have to change its current water tariff. So as of the end of twenty fifteen, the PSC considered it option one or two. Um, whether you chose to bill them regardless of ownership or reflect whether or not their owners can only charge one bill.
That's why they, that F one that you were talking about.
Yep.
Why it happened was because of the box that was filled. Exactly what.
And they, they would, they would contact us and say, okay, which option do you want? Do you want to discount the fact that adjacent owners may own, same owner may own adjacent parcels? Or does that make no difference? And at the time, it was selected option one, which didn't care who the owner was. Or he billed every parcel.
Right, and that's, and that's where the debate lies in the statutory application that you're talking about. So may bill the person for only one parcel, so may versus shall. If it said shall bill the person for only one parcel, then automatically you would be only able to charge one. The may does give discretion, and with that guidance from the PSC, now I'm refreshed, and that's how the conclusion was, was arrived at.
And charge, you gotta pay your bill.
Yeah, and, and agreeing with you, it's not a lot of money, it's like seventy-five bucks.
Well.
But the principle was, wait a minute, you guys screwed up, and now I gotta pay.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that, you know, there was a, there was a miscommunication and a missed application. It was fixed as soon as it was thought, and we realized that we couldn't just do the equitable things. But they said, no, by law, you know, we're the law, the PSC is.
The council would have refunded the money.
Well, we.
We simply could not. And so, yeah, like I said, fortunately, it's not a lot of money, but it's the point.
Yes.
Then I'll, I'll pay it. Are there any other questions that we have on this subject with the attorney? On the council? Okay. Appreciate that, Tony.
Yeah.
All right, to move on to seven, item seven, business agenda. Seven A, City of Kiwanee Library Annual Report Presentation. Carol Patrina, Library Director. Welcome, Carol.
Thank you. Uh, well, hello, my name is Carol Patrina, and for some of you that don't know me, I'm the library director at the Kiwanee Public Library. Some of you know me well and see me on a daily basis, so. Um, I just wanted to go through the annual report that was in your packet and touch on a few aspects of it and answer any questions that you may have. Um, I just want to start with, the very first page has our mission statement that we provide quality materials and services which fulfill educational, informational, cultural, and recreational needs for the community, an atmosphere that is welcoming and respectful. And that's the back of what we do every day, so. On the first page, uh, to our, the letter to our council members and trustees, I just wanted to touch upon a couple of aspects. Our physical item, um, circulation had a four percent increase last year, and then our electronic materials had an eight percent increase, meaning more people are kind of finding things through Librian Hoopla, and so we offer both of those. Now, I touched on some of the programming and the things that we're doing and some of our community partners. Um, one of the meetings that I regularly attend is the Aging Friendly Kiwanee County with Renee Koenig, and through that, I have learned so many things about, um, kind of the concept of building social capital, and I think that's a huge part of what we're doing at the library and strengthening community ties, and for all ages, so. Um, a couple more spots, and there's also, I mentioned our twenty thousand dollar grant that we received last year, and we're kind of just wrapping that up this year. Um, the next page is our staff. Happy to see that we have the same staff now, two, two reports in a row. So, um, those are our four librarians and our emails, so if you have any questions, you can email us there. Our board of directors are all listed, and we have a few new members on there, as well as some members that have been on there for a very long time. Our library as well. The circulation numbers are all listed out there and broke out by township, so you can see which townships are utilizing our services.
Next question on that, anyway. Um, for the inner library loan, is that Kiwanee books that are going out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
I was wondering if there were numbers about.
Actually, that encompasses both directions.
Okay.
So it's the, um, the books coming in that our patrons are requesting, and the books that we are sending out to other libraries in our system, and we are connected to forty-nine other libraries as part of the Nicolay Battery and Library System in Owlsnet. Okay, you can, that's on that page. Our registrations have held fairly steady, they've actually went down a little bit, and that's mainly because Owlsnet did like a patron purge going through accounts, you know, just kind of cleaning up their accounts, so. So we actually stayed fairly even with all that. Then we get to our programming, and you know, that's really the, the meat of what we do there. We're checking out books and materials, but then we're also providing so many different social opportunities, learning opportunities for the community. Um, I start with the early literacy and youth programming, and then also part of our, part of our draw is our space. And if you haven't been to our library, we have what we call our dramatic play space. It's currently a grocery store, one of our most popular options, but it turns from a pizza parlor to a pet vet center. Um, we've really become a destination. Uh, people that, you know, they get their grandkids in the summer, they're coming in, families are there every day. Um, it's definitely a hub of activity, and we put, um, items on the tables, different learning activities, matching, counting, different things. We have a daily scavenger hunt that's happening now all year long because it's been so popular, so. Um, other things that are listed there is our baby and me, which I just did today. I got three hugs from some of the little kids, so it's a very rewarding program for me to run, and little Okie is on the bottom of that page there, she's a cutie. Um, our preschool story time is also a staple of what we do, it happens every Friday. Um, and Jennifer does that, and she's just been doing an amazing job, and the numbers are, she's getting, there's like thirty-six. And the numbers are, she's getting, there's like thirty-six people back there on a Friday morning. So um, kudos to her for all the, the time and effort that she's putting into that and the job that she's doing. The kids are really responding and the parents are obviously bringing on. Um, Lego club is for some of the older kids. They like to come and do challenges and um. You know, use their creativity. Our kids can cook club, also another growing club. Kids just like to come and make the most simple things. Ham and cheese omelets is in the, the picture there. Um, we teach them how to cut up things. We teach them different cooking techniques and they, they just love that. And then we also do team programming. Some of that usually revolves somewhere around food. So taste tests and, and social atmosphere kind of things. Um, then the next page, we go into our adult programming. The, the first adult book club, the page turns adult book club, I run that. And that I'm proud to say is a growing book club. Each month I'm usually getting one or two new members. And so as people are on vacation or aren't able to make it, we usually have over twenty people there. And for Tuesday at noon. That's a pretty nice size group and, and these ladies are such a good support for one another. So another really positive interaction that I get to see on a monthly basis. And then we last year had our senior coffee club. This year we've now um, expanded into a tea for tea at two. And what these really are are social, social gatherings for people that they can get together and really. Um, build some camaraderie and some social connectedness, so. Great sessions and as well as our DIY sessions where they come in and they make a craft or do different, different events. Under our special events in twenty twenty-four. It was a great honor that we were selected as the Great Lakes Great Read location. Um. So that was an author that her book was chosen on. Believe that was a national level or a Midwest level. Um, and she was at our library, so that was a great honor. We have a reading dog that comes and visits and the kids can read stories to him. And then some of our larger events, we had um, two different magic shows, the man Isaiah. And then Jim Lems' magic show for graded tenants. We usually do those at the Holy Rosary Gym just to have more room. And then last summer, their summer reading, they kind of took on the road and we went to the Firehouse Museum in Boomer Park and featured some of our area hotspots, so. Um, there's the financial summary that just kind of goes over a couple of the accounts that are not on your normal budget. So that's our. Our library boards, money market and endowment accounts, and then our finance fee accounts. The board last year, some of their expenditures is they purchased three new computers. We have those on a ongoing rotation. Um, they. Bought additional nonfiction materials for the adults and juveniles. And then part of our, our grant, um, a county library board member approached. Arly Dell and um, he donated chairs in memory of Jean Del for her years of service on the county library board. So that was kind of part of our accessibility grant. And then there's pages of all the cute faces that we get to see every day. There would be more pictures of adults and most of our adults don't like their picture taken, so. And then programming by the numbers that just breaks down by age group. The number of programs we had, the attendance at all of them. And then self-directed activities are those things I was talking about, either on the tables or their take and makes, things that people can come in and grab. And so look at the numbers for those. And then social media, we have our website that we manage ourselves and um, we have a Facebook page and an Instagram account. Both that get quite a bit of interaction. And then. I started putting this special accomplishments, accomplishments page. Uh, one of those being that we received this twenty thousand dollar grant last year that. Was a nationwide grant that you could either get ten or twenty and we got twenty. And so. We take a lot of pride in that and we wrap that up and I encourage anybody to come over and go to the bathroom at the library because they're beautiful and they're now eighty-eight, fine, so. Um, yeah, and then we, our um, Nicolay puts out an innovation and improvement grant. And we use that to create a makerspace cart that we put out and put different types of STEAM activities. To encourage um, the learning in those areas as well. So does anyone have any questions?
No questions. That's a good report.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol. A lot of good stuff going on. All right, then at this time I would entertain a motion to accept the twenty-two, twenty twenty-four annual library report and place it on file. I'll make the motion to accept the report.
One second.
Any discussion? All who was in favor signify by saying aye. opposed, motion carried. All right, seven B, resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed three million five hundred thirty-five thousand dollar general obligation promissory notes.
Okay, over the course of the last couple of years dating to June of twenty twenty-three, council has engaged bear to assist the city with preparing financing options for completion of various capital projects. Projects are based on preparing for the city to implement road recon- reconstruction projects, including replacement of water sewer, water and sewer utilities, storm sewers and other elements along Dodge Street. And the main center street section. Which are under the design process with Cedar Corp, the city engineer. Uh, council previously authorized the engineering design bid document preparation for the Dodge Street and the Main Street. Main and Center Street projects, which of which includes a combination of clean water fund and safe drinking water loan programs. Loan funds for which the city engineers preparing to apply for. Uh, local road improvement program funds awarded by WISDOT, special assessments and general obligation funding. Uh, in addition, the council recently authorized the adoption of a plan. Of the docking system in the marina with docks acquired through Pier and Waterfront Solutions along with replacement or reallocation of existing plumbing electrical systems. Finally, as part of the capital funding program initiated in June twenty twenty-three, the city is continuing the program of financing for capital improvements. In every of your system of debt financing. Justin Fisher was here to present, uh, make the presentation which is attached to the, uh, to my write-up here. To the finance committee, but he was unable to attend. So here we have Adam Rico standing in for him. Welcome to.
All right.
All right, so what I'm here to talk to you guys about is essentially what kind of came out of the finance committee and kind of what is in front of you tonight. Um, as council members. So what the parameters resolution essentially does is kind of gives us as bear the green light to start working on preparing an official statement. And getting this promissory note essentially kind of put together and packaged so that then it can be essentially marketed out. As you know, right now the market is very interesting right now. So those are one of the things obviously that we're looking at. Um, in regards to what makes sense. So what this would do is essentially if you were to pass this resolution tonight. What that does is that gives obviously the authority then for a final send-off of the notes to be done. With designated parameters that would be set by you that then essentially could be approved then and signed by the city administrator or the mayor. Essentially, we do that and is work on then the official statement that shows all of the kind of financial information for the city. Talks about particularly what is going to be in the promissory notes. We then look at marketing that information out obviously to potential investors and then discuss bond insurance because your bonds are not rated. That is something that you've done in the past, which bond insurance is kind of a way to get. Investors comfortable in wanting to purchase your bonds and knowing that. So that's obviously something to have a look at. And then right now we will be targeting May eighth, twenty twenty-five to actually go into the market. And that's only if we kind of see that everything's in line with what we're looking for, which is that we're anticipating that we'll be able to get the interest rate that we have kind of talked about. If not, then basically we'll kind of continue to watch the market. And then when it makes sense, we then would go in the market. Um, that's one of the services obviously that Justin and that we provide. Um, and then we'd be looking to close the funds if everything worked out. Around June second of twenty twenty-five. So essentially what this is looking at doing is about a three, three million five hundred thirty-five thousand dollar general obligation promissory note. Um, the purpose of it as kind of he alluded to and what was discussed with. Uh, the finance committee is this is really to fund kind of a couple of items. Number one is the marina for about one point three million. Uh, there's Dodge Street for about nine hundred and seventy thousand, uh, two hundred and sixty thousand for mains, uh, main center street. And then as he alluded to, one of the things that we have been working with Heath and also the sitting on is getting into kind of an every other year capital improvement planning, borrowing about a million dollars. That covers five hundred thousand dollars a year. The thing can be decided by obviously you and the staff on what makes the most sense to kind of move those those funds towards, whether that's equipment, whether that's improvements that you want to make, um, et cetera. So. As you can see, that's kind of been structured with the CIP portion. So that one million dollars, we're looking at about a ten-year financing for that. We would need principal interest payments for that. And then everything else, because obviously it's streets and particularly the marina, we're looking at a twenty-year shelf life because. The hope is again that you're not going to have to touch or do anything with those once you put those improvements in for at least twenty years. So the way that currently we're looking at structuring this is that for the first two years, there would not be. Any uh, principal payments and then we would just have interest and then essentially kind of starting in twenty twenty-seven would be the first years that you would actually see principal and interest. Um, applied to all of those. So what this looks at doing essentially right now is in the illustration, we kind of look at your existing debt and layer in all of these particular projects. And so right now you have a combined mill rate of one dollar and forty-four cents related to debt. So what this would do then in twenty twenty-six is essentially would increase that to one dollars and seventy-three cents. And then you would see again another increase to two dollars and six cents. And that's where you would have the decision where you could kind of make some options because what would happen there is you essentially would have the ability again. We'd be looking at potentially doing another financing for kind of your next two years of capital improvement planning. If that makes sense, that's currently what is baked into kind of this financial scenario here on page three. Where it kind of shows you how that all plays out. So you would see that even with adding that kind of one million dollars of additional kind of capital improvement plan in twenty twenty-seven. Um, we continue to kind of see that mill rate drop and that's kind of the goal that we've been talking about is eventually we want to get into where. That one million dollars that comes up kind of every two years, just kind of stays flat. You don't see that kind of huge increase with projects and kind of allows you to do exactly this. Which is look at any other projects that may make sense or kind of be on the horizon for various needs and how that kind of can be layered in. If not, then essentially what would happen is if you didn't take on those projects, you would see then starting kind of in twenty twenty-seven, then obviously that mill rate is going to drop. Because we're not layering in that one million dollars. Um, so this was all kind of discussed with the finance committee and what they recommended was essentially that this be in front of you tonight, uh, and for approval. Anything else I'm missing there Heath before?
No, I don't think so.
Want to get hit?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
On the amortization schedule under section two, I guess what caught my eye was twenty thirty-four and twenty thirty-five. Where the principal amount goes from one fifty to three ten. Why would there be such, why is that? You know, because it, it looks like all of them are in about the same area. Except that big jump in thirty-four and thirty-five. And if that's the principal amount and you're adding. Interest onto that and that's under general obligation. Where would the city come up with four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars plus interest under a general obligation bond?
So in twenty thirty. Twenty thirty-four and twenty thirty-five, what the reason why that is increasing is because the way we have the CIP kind of put together right now, if you look at that last column there, the ten years. Is that's where you're kind of making the final payments of your principal and interest. And then that drops. So we have that kind of layered in. So if you look at them, the combined mill rate, although you're making those large principal and interest payments. Mill rate actually is anticipated to kind of drop. In twenty thirty-three, you've got one point eight three and then there's actually a significant reduction there where it goes down to one thirty, one dollar and thirty-four cents. So we have that kind of layered in. The other thing we can also look at too with that is these notes become callable as of March first of twenty thirty-three. So there is the ability where if at that point in time, the interest rate is better or there potentially is an option, we can refinance then. And even push out some of that principal and interest. So that's one of the reasons why you're seeing that it is probably a little higher there is because we do that on purpose with the intention that if the market is good. We then can restructure some of those principal and interest payments and push that out. If we're seeing that, you know, right now this is being potentially at a, you know, we're looking at four point nine five, hopefully we can get something better than that, but. If in twenty thirty-three, the interest rate is much better, we could have the discussion then about refinancing those principal and interest costs. Uh, under a reduced amount, which then would lower those principal and interest payments.
If the mill rate is lowered. Would the reason for that be reevaluating the city?
So what we have in this right now is an estimate that every year it's increasing by about two percent, which is very conservative is your equalized value. So yes, if you were to see that your equalized value would jump more than that, then your mill rate actually would be less. So this is just kind of factoring in a formula that basically says, let's just keep it even. And see what happens. But essentially, yeah, if you were to see a reevaluation or anything like that, that also would play into these numbers that they may not be where they are.
Have you done, have you done any work to, because when we talked about this before. Especially on the marina, if the marina is going to be part of this, I thought the marina should probably help pay that loan back. You know, through. You know, through the revenue. Have you done anything? That would show that the marina could pay a portion of that debt service?
I think we looked into that when we discussed, I mean, we started looking at this one in twenty twenty-three Heath, I think is when we started kind of reviewing all this. Um, unfortunately, right now the scenarios we ran was that. It couldn't, but that is obviously anything from the council is if it ever gets to a point where. Uh, certainly we'll continue to monitor that and you know, that's one of the roles that I do with obviously helping you guys with. The capital improvement plan and your TIF districts. I'm monitoring that all the time with your audits that are done. So if it ever gets to a point where we see that that is a possibility, we would certainly make that recommendation to you to consider that. Because in a perfect world, yes, you would want the marina be able to. The marina in a perfect world is able to handle any of its own principal and interest payments. If not, then that's the conversation for the community in the city. Is do you then want the general fund to support that? And right now you're making that, if you make that decision, yes, you're saying that it's right now, the general fund is going to be supporting that. But if it ever gets to that point. That's the conversation then where we can look at what that means.
There's going to be some, uh, points that are going to be brought up to the new marina committee. So. Should the marina committee not? Uh, let's just say they decide they don't want, because the docks are not purchased, that's going to come up on the closed session, but. Should the marina committee say, no, we want to go in a different direction? Should we borrow? The one point three million, include that in the three point five million? And what if we decide, well, we're not going to do that anymore and now that's changed?
So generally the way we write, particularly when we go out into the market is that this is to fund the streets and capital improvement projects. So if that would be a decision that you would make as a city where if you didn't take on any piece of this puzzle for whatever reason. We can have discussions then about can you shift that to another item? So that potentially could be, you know.
No, it's not about paying the loan off.
And that's, that's the kind of the conversation. If you've got some options, either one is we can look at the parameters of the resolution, which we usually try to keep, not vague, but we keep it to. Capital improvement planning, road improvement, street improvements. So the question would be, you got two options then. One is just like you said, if that's not going to happen. You just pay it off and you're done and we look at that. And one of the things we'd have to look at with that is. There will be potentially some defeasance costs because when you're taking out, again, when you're asking an invest, an investor to invest, they want some guarantee that there's going to be. Level principal and interest payments that they're getting their money back. So we'd have to run some scenarios about what made the most sense. Does it make sense to? Pay that back if there is going to be some form of a cost or a penalty that you have to do for that defeasance? Or does it make sense to have the conversation of, well, are there any other projects that? You would want to take on that then you wouldn't then need to borrow in twenty twenty-seven or future, et cetera. Those would be the scenarios that. Justin and I would be looking to run for you guys if you wanted to go down that road.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none. And then I would then entertain a motion to adopt resolution number two zero two five dash two zero five two, authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed. Three million five hundred thirty-five thousand dollar general obligation promissory notes. Any discussion? Here I'm not being spent.
I'm sorry?
And this money is being spent on these projects. Is there any grant money involved with these?
Yes. Do you want me to get that quick here for you?
Please.
Good question. So if you look at in the packet, page three, I don't know if you can see it, but I can explain it otherwise. So there are a lot of kind of layers to this. So the three point five million is essentially the general obligation debt portion that's being covered. Uh, the other thing that obviously is also being considered are clean water drinking fund loans. And safe drinking water. Where with those you do get some kind of grant assistance. So those two are, well, one of those essentially is the safe drinking water. Loan principal forgiveness, that's almost about eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's one of the grants that kind of applies with if you're, if you're receive that, you get that. Uh, there is some special assessments that are also in there and then there is the local road improvement program for almost about seven hundred thousand dollars that is also being included in. And covering some of those costs.
So we're picking the loan out for three and a half mil, but we're getting five mil worth of work.
There's other, yes. So there's other funding sources as well that are covering that outside of just the general obligation portion.
And as things come up.
Obviously, we're not going to turn away from another opportunity if it presents itself. So we're always going to be. Looking at any additional grant opportunities, so, yes. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Anyone else? All right, please call roll.
Aye.
La Ha.
Yes.
Brewster?
Aye.
House?
Aye.
Off to the.
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Um, aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Seven C, authorize staff to sign a contract for services with the Wisconsin Humane Society to be reimbursed by a cause for pause.
Now, yeah, Cause for Pause is a nonprofit organization dedicating to address the problem of stray dogs tracks. Yeah, cause for pause is a nonprofit organization dedicating to address the problem of stray dogs, cats, or more humane program catching and taking them to the newest available. Wisconsin Humane Society branch facility. Uh, our contact is here. She can explain the program on how this, how this relates to what we're doing here.
So my name is Rachel Charles. I'm with the cause for pause. Um, we, there's five of us ladies um who formed the organization saw a need for. We don't have a shelter, Humane Society in Kewanee County. Uh, you get a stray dog, you get a stray cat, what do you do with it? You can take it to Green Bay. They're not contractually obligated to take it. This time of year, cat season is starting their full. Good luck getting them to take it. So we um are facilitating the municipalities entering into contracts with Wisconsin Humane Society for stray animal services. Our group cannot enter into the contract, it has to be with the municipalities. Um, so we've made contact with Wisconsin Humane Society, um, have the contract, have gotten the costs um from them. And then we take it one step further. We've done all the fundraising, we will fund the contract. Um, we basically, the way we did it in Algoa, they ventured into a contract. Their contract price was fifteen hundred dollars for the year. We wrote the SADIA check for fifteen hundred bucks. And then they pay the monthly invoice to Wisconsin Humane Society, fifteen hundred dollars in twelve equal payments. Uh, I, Wisconsin Humane Society has told me, the hard part is it's a one year contract, right? It's reevaluated every year. The hard part is there's no data as to how many animals we can expect to be bringing to Humane Society. We could bring ten a year, we could bring none, we could bring a hundred. So what they've done is extrapolated, um, taken the population of the municipalities and extrapolated it with other municipalities. They currently serve similar size and estimated. So the first year, they estimated a thousand dollars for the contract. Again, it's a one year contract, reevaluated, evaluated every year, adjusted. Depending on what they see as far as how many animals are coming in from Kewanee County.
So it's my understanding that the city is going to conduct business as usual with uh. Collecting the animals that are reported as stray and then they will be picked up by.
So this is where part of the other part that we see as could be a roadblock, right? Not only funding, but um, what do you do? Like the, the PD goes and picks up a cat, then they have to have an officer take it to Green Bay or Door County to the Humane Society. Uh, so what we are and what we facilitated in Algoa is we um find volunteers who are willing to. The officer can go out and pick up that stray dog or stray cat, bring it back to the police department. We've got volunteers that will then drive it to the Humane Society in either Green Bay or Door County, can go to either location.
So then again, we're going to conduct business as usual. And any of these fees that are incurred will be reimbursed. And there won't be any cost to the city at the first year, second year, or any year.
So ideally, eventually, we'd love to see the municipalities take over that cost, right? I mean, it, we don't want to fund it forever, but we also know going into it, it's, you've got to find money. So. We've got a sufficient uh amount of funds. We've, we've had a donor, we had an anonymous donor that donated or matched our first ten thousand. We've gotten that match and well beyond exceeded that. We've also got a couple of private donors who are willing to, you know, if this is something that. Going into the contract for a few years, we really see it as a need and it's become a success and it's working well, are willing to um, to continue funding those contracts if necessary.
So uh, looking at the agreement, it stated, I believe that it's a one year contract, but it'll renew for two more years. Some language to that effect. Or are we going to have an annual report? And then an annual, we're going to renew, I guess, is, is what I'm thinking, that we would have an annual renewal, not a reoccurring automatic contract.
Okay, so you're thinking you reevaluate it. So my understanding from Wisconsin Humane Society is this is their typical contract that they enter into with all municipalities. They really don't deviate from it much. I don't recall, I haven't looked at the contract yet uh in the last few days. I don't recall what the renewal process was.
Tony, did you have a chance to see this contract?
I don't know.
Okay.
Anything I do, I've got it. I can send it to you, Tony.
Sure, I guess uh I'll open it up for other questions. My concern was just, you know, is it going to take anything additional city resources? Uh, either manpower or money.
Aside from an officer going out and picking it up?
Which we do anyways.
Correct. That's our goal is to not have it. The city isn't going to incur any more costs, manpower, anything like that. That's, that's the goal behind it, not only in us funding it, but also finding the volunteers to transport them to the Humane Society.
Questions, counsel? Joe?
What I'm telling over in my head right now is, is I'm trying to figure out is, is. Is this a solution to a problem or is this a problem looking for a solution? I mean, a solution looking for a problem.
That'd be a great question for.
Uh, no, no, it's actually for the city, because what are we doing now?
Well, unfortunately, the chief wasn't able to be here this evening, but um. My understanding is uh the animals are housed at the street shop, I believe. Augie, can you maybe weigh in on that a little bit? Don't they house them? We have a kennel or something and then we wait for.
I think you moved it up here, didn't you?
Oh, yeah, it's up here. Yep, you're right. And if the owner would claim it, then obviously it goes home. And then otherwise, I don't know.
Yeah, I'll throw that out all the way there.
I, I mean, I would think most uh, most dogs that you're going to pick up, they have an owner looking for them, right? Your biggest issue is probably going to be cats.
And my question is, cats, who are we talking about?
I mean, well, if it's no additional effort on the city's part and it's no additional funding. I guess what's, you know, they're, they're trying to do the humane thing for the animals. Is, is what their goal and mission is and what's best for the animals and. We're just simply doing what's best for the animals and the community by not letting them loose, which we do already.
The other aspect that we're trying to do in addition to the Humane Society uh contract is also. Work, because we realize there, there, I'm sure there's plenty of feral cats, colony cats. Uh, we're trying to work with uh T N R services to. People who have the outdoor cats that aren't uh going to be adoptable or brought to the shelter, we can at least get to the speed and. And, and work on doing that as well, because that's also a problem.
Yeah, my understanding is that with normal feral cats euthanasia is what happens.
It is, yeah. From the most part, if they're brought somewhere and they're not adoptable.
They're euthanized.
Not necessarily. They do have working cat or barn cat programs. But the demand for that kind of comes in waves. So. Yeah, I mean, there are times when they are euthanized, but if, but they do, to the extent that they're able to, they do try to get them out as working cats or barn cats.
Well, don't get me wrong, I have no problem with.
Oh, I understand that. Yeah. It, it's not, their goal isn't to, to euthanize them, but if they are not adoptable, they do look for other options.
So okay, look, yes, we have a fifteen hundred dollar initial fee for the first year, and then we have a recurring contract.
What we're doing right now is that costing us as a city fifteen hundred dollars a year?
Couldn't answer that. But whatever it's costing us, um, that cost would be relieved.
The first year, yes.
And we'll reevaluate the second year.
Well, we're not, I mean, we're not looking to just do it for a year and then cut out. I mean, that's our goal as a group. That's why we've formed a nonprofit is we're not just coming in and saying, here's a thousand bucks. Now you guys are on the hook for years and years and years.
I think the council's questions are, and I mean. Council member Mills is one posing it right now, but I, I think the others have to share the same opinion is. What could be the reoccurring cost for the city going forward, right? It's just an unknown that, you know, before we accept an agreement, we like to have a good handle on what it is. And until we've got at least one year on the record, how many animals have we dealt with? And I don't know how many animals in general, I, I don't believe it's an exorbitant amount, but uh, that we deal with. So, yeah, that's, that's, I think our concern is just.
And it's a fair concern, obviously, yeah.
The way this is written is. It's an automatic renewal for the second and third year.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Is there a notice period though? That you can watch your note?
Sixty day day.
So we would have to notify you sixty days that we would terminate.
Okay, so.
So there's, there's the clause. So, we're paused.
So it's just being tied into that new, that and reevaluating, is it worth it?
I just have a question, something else, but from an educational standpoint. What are things that we can collaborate on to kind of get information out about? You know, what are the safest, most appropriate things to do with stray animals? Because I kind of, I'm getting this sense right now that most people run to, you know, Kewanee speak up. And just post kind of thing. And I'm thinking like, that leaves a lot of gaps in information, but maybe things like our, our city newsletter. Kind of things like that.
We've kind of learned along the way too in doing this is trying to get that education out, because that's exactly what people do. They just go to.
Cause I imagine all the communities in the counties that are entering this, we could probably be posting the same information.
Correct. And, you know, we've got resources for if you find an animal, if you lose an animal, what to do. Um, yeah, I mean, there's lots of resources out there. It's just a matter of getting it and sharing it with the community. And we're, we would love to do as much as we can to get that out there and help educate.
Yeah, obviously you have to have awareness so the community understands the resource, so. Any further questions? Um, I would like the city attorney to review the agreement as standard.
And I did just get a contract and wait stuff here from Kewanee County with the, I think the one that I sent to Scott was what we used in Algoa, it had the fifteen hundred, that was far up the number.
So then after review by the city attorney, if it's deemed appropriate or any modifications, then I would entertain, entertain a motion to adopt the agreement. With the cause for pause.
One second.
Any further discussion? Please call roll.
King court?
Hi.
Waha?
Yep.
Brewster?
Hi.
House? Off to the door?
Hi.
Mills?
Nick.
Conley?
Hi.
Motion carried. All right, thank you. Appreciate it. All right, then we'll move on to item seven D authorize closure of Ellis Street from Milwaukee Street to Main Street for a farmer's market on Thursday afternoons.
Allison Smith is requesting uh closure of a block of Ellis Street from Milwaukee Street to Main Street. So they can relocate the farmer's market to that block on Thursday afternoons. Generally from July through September on weekly, weekly or biweekly basis from both four o'clock and seven o'clock. Which means that the street would probably be closed off or barricaded starting around through three thirty to make sure that traffic moved out, and then they'd reopen after seven. Uh, the objective is to try and relocate the farmer's market proximate to the downtown businesses. She provided this discussion to the public works committee, and so public works committee was sort of generally supportive of this. Um, process. So I'll let public works committee staff or, or members, if they want to weigh in on what.
I can, yeah, yeah, she appeared before the, before our committee. Uh, there was a couple of concerns that uh she definitely, you know, she has to address. One is trying to get the traffic off the street. And certain amount of time, so she thought she could take care of that. Um, she has talked to pretty much all the businesses on that street, I believe, except one yet. Um, because it's so late, four to seven, most of those places are already closed. Uh, some of them will be open, obviously, but they didn't seem to mind for that. Her idea again was to try and get the farmer's market. She thought if she got the farmer, could get the farmer's market downtown area. Would be bring more people to the community compared to where it is now. Uh, you know, parking, of course, is going to be a little bit of an issue, but you know, Allison does a pretty good job with the car show and stuff, so. Um, you know, the committee felt uh that she could easily handle that. And I think, you know, we also have to look at, you know, every time someone wants to do something, you know. All, you can't get anything done if we keep saying no to everything, so we thought we should try that. Will there be some people who are going to say, you know, can I shut it off on such and such a day, I suppose? You know, we'll just have to address that when it gets to that point. But um, uh, the entire committee felt that it was worth it to give her a shot at this, so. She does have to work some stuff out with the farmer's market yet, because there's some people there who don't want to move. There's some people do want to move. Some people aren't coming back. Um, she also brought up uh the issue of maybe instead of doing it every week. Um, that they would maybe do it every two weeks. She thought they would maybe get more people, more vendors there, because vendors are dropping out. Um, so she thought maybe biweekly might be better, but those are things that she can work out. Those details she can work out, you know, as the, as it progresses, so. Right, the pavilion by the clock was more initially the idea of that space. Um, but downtown, you're looking at definitely more exposure uh to people. And if you're not getting exposure, you're not selling, you're not going to have vendors. And she does have a list of other vendors other than the farmer's market vendors. So she's got quite an extensive list. You know, she's trying to make it just better for the downtown. And you're drawing people downtown, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I remember um. The idea was this could start in twenty twenty five, it could, we, it could be held off till twenty twenty six. Um, as a possibility. Um, so I guess part of the discussion as we go is, is like. Are we confident enough that we can address the issues to go ahead and roll for the current summer? Um, or are there enough questions, things that have to get worked out? That it's like, we're open to the idea, but let's plan for this a year from now rather than the current summer, so.
She's talked to the police department. Robin's not here, huh?
No.
Yeah, she did talk to the police department. She has had conversations uh with Robin, so Robin's, you know. Pretty much aware of what's going on. So and there'll be, you know, the barricades, you know, he'll be able to get a fire truck through their police car or an ambulance or something if you, and she knows all that. So. Yeah, I mean, we do it for the car show or we do this, so we're keeping that, so. I guess the only thing would be is that, you know, you, you, you just uh evaluate where we're at, you know, if this starts in July, evaluate where we're at. I mean, if you've got three vendors down there. You know, it likely doesn't pay to close a street off for three vendors. Well, you know, yeah, right, but you got to start somewhere. And you've got to build it up from something to something. And I think this is the summer that she's intending to start it, so. Yeah, and, and there's going to be something she needs, she's going to need to correct, and she knows that, it's. It's not going to be a full streak. No, it's something new, so. Um, you know, there'll be some. Glitches here and there that have to be addressed, so.
Yeah, Allison, um, I'm pretty confident anybody can make it work, it's her.
Well, and I would entertain a motion to authorize a closure of Ellis Street from Milwaukee Street to Main Street for the farmer's market on Thursday afternoons. July through September from three P M to seven P M.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. All right, seven E approve addendum number twenty dash one with Cedar Corporation to perform engineering services. For Scott Street between Dodge Street and Milwaukee Street as part of the Dodge Street Reconstruction Project in the amount of eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Public Works Staff requested the possibility of including uh what they're calling an alternative to add on to the Dodge Street Reconstruction Project. Which would involve replacing sewer and water lines along Scott Street in the block between Dodge and Milwaukee Streets. That's provided an image in your packet. The image includes the watering sewer lines is currently mapped. Project aims to essentially replace those lines with compliant water line and updated sewer lines. Which are to be a replacement followed by repairing the surface street. The objective of this add-on is not to, is to not have to re-engineer what exists, but to create specifications for the replacement of what exists. The addendum is intended for the creation of drawing specifications and contract bidding documents. Uh, this is going to be attached to the Dodge Street project when it goes after bids, as alternative bid, so that if they choose to bid on it, they can add this on. And as part of that, since they're already there, they can mobilize to do this work too. This is also because this would be taking out a, a block of street and cleaning it up and replacing the line so that it's. Everything within the vicinity is now relatively newer. Um, it's just to give an additional, optional addition to the bid, considered affordable, the city can choose to execute if they bid it out of sight, then we'll just skip it and come back for it. Um, so all we're asking for here is to request uh approval so that Cedar Corp can engage in doing that during preparation.
Okay. Also.
Yeah, a motion. Second, any discussion? Hearing none, please call roll.
King court?
Hi.
Waha?
Yes.
Brewster?
Hi.
House?
Hi.
Off to the door?
Hi.
Mills?
Hi.
Conley?
Hi.
Motion carried. Seven F authorize staff to put out bid request for resurfacing project for Fifth Street, Cherry Court, Birch Court, and Plum Court.
Uh, public work staff working over the last few years to address street pavement deficiencies with a variety of means. Including operational budget funding and more recently with C I P budgeting. As part of the twenty twenty five budget development process, staff developed the capital projects budget for twenty twenty five into twenty six, the incorporated projects such as this. Uh, by placing them in a separate budget. Public staff, public work staff requested to allocate funds for the resurfacing of Fifth Street between Center Street and Lincoln Street. As that stretch is currently in poor condition, needs a refresh of some kind. Along with the three cul-de-sac courts along the west side of that section, which are in variable condition. Um, staff put forth a couple of options to the public works committee for this resurfacing. One would be. One would be mill and repave the three and a half inches of asphalt for all street sections. Or option two would be a chip and seal code method for all street sections. Similar to what was completed on the two hundred block of Harrison Street and the five hundred block of Lake Street last summer or last fall. Staff required some estimates of the starting point. The mill and repave effort would be approximately estimated at about a hundred seventy grand for Fifth Street and another fifty thousand dollars per cul-de-sac, for a total of three hundred twenty thousand dollars. That formed the basis of the budget for this project, which was put into place. Chip and seal coat project was estimated at roughly just over half that cost, though the new asphalt would last at least twice as long as the seal coating would. And in the case of Cherry Court, the surface is so bad that the asphalt is going to be required. So at best, we're looking at some kind of combination project as, that's a cheaper alternative. But, or you can go with the full asphalt. What staff is requesting is authorization to go for bids. Staff recognizes the cheaper avenues, chip and seal coat, than to asphalt would likely have a much longer service life. While the project's done last year, using seal coating held up well so far, it's also been less than a year, so we don't really know what the long-term effect is. Staff is open to providing both alternatives, Public Works and Common Council for direction. Public Works sort of indicated, the committee sort of indicated that mill and repave was a better response, particularly on Fifth Street, which has higher traffic, particularly truck traffic. Although there was at least some openness to combinations of them. So it's possible, we probably should consider doing this as bids with both options and then kind of mix and matches we go along. And so what you'd want to do is then we'll structure the bids to reference each section of road and then say, okay, if you're doing the full combination, how much would it cost if we did all of it one way? Or all of it the other way, and then set up a set of bids for each individual section, so we know what that looks like. Because individual sections will cost a little bit more, knowing that they might potentially not be doing all of it. So we're asking for authorization, at least advertise for bids.
Can I add to that?
Yeah, do. Matt Mur, Matt, Matt Murphy's, can we ask Matt Murphy a quick question here? He's used that chip. Matt, you use that, a lot of that chip seal in Algoma. How does that hold up? Is that holding up good?
It's up in the city now, that's going to be five years old this summer, and it's very, very pleased with it. So far, it's handled very well through the following seasons. We're very happy with it, and I don't want to change anybody's mind. Remember, you can spend that longevity of putting blacktop down. If you're not doing anything to your infrastructure, pipes underneath, you can put blacktop down that'll last for twenty years, but if you have a water main break, you're going to come through that brand new blacktop too. So if you can save some money on the front end with the chip seal, and that's the roads we use it on, is if we're not doing complete rebuild or re-man the road, we're using that chip seal process because you're not getting the longevity, but you're not spending that big upfront price having to possibly tear up your road in four or five years either.
Isn't that what we did the last time on Center Street? Anything else to add, John?
No, that's it. I.
All right, then I would entertain a motion to authorize staff to put out bid requests for resurfacing projects for Fifth Street, Cherry Court, Birch Court and Plum Court. Council to determine if bids can use mill and repave, chip and seal coat, or permit mixing of approached approaches by itemized billing. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Well, second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Did you want to do this, as I suggested, with the bids?
With the combination, I think, I think we pretty much, isn't that what we talked about, Scott? I mean, we thought we could use, possibly use a combination of.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carry. G, close session one. The common council may enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C and G. Delivering or negotiating and purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session and conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved, reacquisition of replacement docks for the marina.
Tony also suggests.
Yeah, because I understand there are three different closed session topics.
Can we do them all in it?
We can all, we can go into closed session, do them all at once and then take any action.
Should I read all three then? Okay. H, closed session two, the common council may enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five. Is that E or C? I can't read. E. Delivering or negotiating and purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And to reenter open session at the time placed thereafter to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate. Reentering into collective bargaining with the Kiwanee Professional Police Association. All right. Well, session three, the common council may enter closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one E. Delivering or negotiating and purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. And to reenter open session at the same place thereafter to act on such matters discussed therein as it deems appropriate. Reference, school resource officer contract proposal. Any motion to go into closed session?
Very well.
Yeah, I will.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Jean Court?
Aye.
Blah?
Yes.
Brewster?
Aye.
House?
Aye.
Off to the door?
Aye.
Mills?
Aye.
Conley?
Aye.
Motion carried. We're now on closed session?
Yes. We're in closed session. We gotta wait. We just wait until it clears up.
Does anyone want to take a minute to get the rest of them? Please feel free.